...meeting of the Villarreal Eagle Area School District School Board to order at seven ten. And we need a call. I suppose I can do that. Charlie Roy.
Here.
Hi, buddy.
Up here.
Zach Wackowski.
Here.
Norris Carsley is here. Jean Reed.
Here.
Kinsley Ruschowski.
Here.
Christiana Lee.
Yeah.
Seeing we have one hundred percent of the board, we definitely have a forum. I'll read the district mission statement. We ensure that students excel in their intellectual virtue, inspired by innovative educators, who engage and challenge each individual. You join me for the public meetings. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on our nation, on our ground, in this world with liberty and justice for all. And we have a motion to approve the agenda.
I would like to move consent item eleven D hires to close session, please.
Eleven D hires?
Mm-hmm. Of the consent agenda.
Okay. Any other amendments to the agenda? We need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
A second. Any further discussion? All those who favor the AI.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Public comment. Do anyone here who doesn't know what I did receive, will be all the through the public comment email, which I will read. The first one is from Kami Cluse from the Village of Eagle. And her statement is that you already deferred the six hundred thousand short-term borrowing bank until November, which we understand covers until state funding comes in and cannot be extended any further. We're not considering another two million dollar credit line in the name of COVID just in case. If you in fact have money in the savings fund and are doing as well as you are purporting to be, there would be no need to take out such a large credit line. I urge the board to not take out this credit line for any further debt. And then there's the second one from Sherri Geraci from the Town of Eagle, which states, I have concerns regarding the proposal to request two million dollars of a line of credit. There is currently a six hundred thousand dollar short-term loan that is standard loans borrowed from Big Mac every year. I question why another two million is needed, especially for such a low current enrollment of children, only five hundred ninety-three kids district-wide. Your reports indicate a savings fund of three point five million. So unless I am reading the reports incorrectly, and this is a possibility, I would think that the savings should be looked into before more money is borrowed. It was previously mentioned in an operating that a line of credit would be looked into as just in case money, but two million? Question mark. A couple of years ago, a four million dollar referendum was requested or denied. Enrollment has declined further. Responsible cuts have been made by the current school board. If the district financial status statement has reported, then why would the high amount of two million be needed to be requested? That dollar amount is a very alarming amount. Should that amount be something that would be presented to taxpayers in the form of a referendum? That doesn't seem like an amount of money that could be responsibly paid back, balanced with current revenue coming in. In the final statement, I'm confused on what the two million dollar line of credit is being requested for. The action item on the school board agenda states that it would be needed for COVID financial risks. Letter released yesterday indicates that it is for backup funds. An email received from Mr. Jeff Tornamasky in response to the question I sent to the school board indicates that this is needed in relation to what state aid is being released to the district. I believe that this would be the most accurate answer, correct? The two million dollar line of credit is needed due to the fact that DPI is holding the over three million dollars that PASC owes for open enrollment. If PASC has a fund balance of three point five million, then this should be accessed prior to borrowing any further funds. So we don't go back and forth for public comment, but I believe a lot of these issues were asked about and talked about at the finance committee meeting. And I think we're going to get further explanation from Dr. Gray when it comes to that action item. But thank you for your comments. Hey, board moderator. Board moderator. E-Dynamic Platform. That's it, guys. So I feel all these are led by Jean and Nancy, girls, because they have to turn around, but I don't know the other way of doing it. So I'm Carrie Tammy.
I'm Jenny Anderson.
Jenny, I always think Jenny is playing the famous, she's Jenny Anderson, but I'm just making her famous, so I don't really know. So to be honest, I'll talk a little bit about E-Dynamic Platform. I'm going to give you a history, kind of why you chose this. A lot of people were maybe young, personal, possibly started on a lot of you who have not experienced it. We don't have a few little children right on our front, and that's why children are cute, but. So we did a quick video to give you an idea of how many kids this program is currently being led by and what they're taking for courses. So we'll show them that, and then Jenny's going to talk a little bit about her baby. I did just share this with you as well, so you have it. So I guess start with why, why E-Dynamic, why it's an online program. As you well know, it is difficult for us to offer a lot of very specific elective courses. So when I set out looking for something, and I actually stumbled upon the program through a class I was taking, we looked for a way to expand our in-house offer. So agriculture business, agriculture settings are, those are two of them where we have taken things like agro-science and, but it was all the way down biotechnology, which we could never do for the one or two kids who want to take that. We'll go through some of the courses, and like I said, you'll see everyone who they're taking, but that was really the biggest care. Taking, we already have, we're going to farther with them. It also allows us to address some areas that we have not. We hired IT and computers, for example. My business teacher holds a computer certification but doesn't have room to teach those classes. And she also holds the marketing certification but doesn't have room to teach those classes. Website makes it easy. Every kid's got Chromebook. There's no book feed, there's no material feed, but that makes it easy and accessible for kids. The flexible scheduling is a huge part of it. Jenny, as you will see, has kids taking ten different classes in one class period. We've realized that there is some disadvantage to that as well, with a really word of the kids can be in third hour taking five different classes, and anybody who follows is really hard at a high school level to schedule and get everybody what they need. It can only happen once a day. So these are our lovely children. It's wild because there's a lot of them, but they're. So what you're going to see is every kid and what they're currently taking for class. Why is this? How is that older? My technology and I are not friends. My teachers would say, gee. I see some of their really excited class pictures in there. Or the math.
Their math.
You're ready to all grade, or just the upper-level grade?
It's all grades. It's all grades.
All grades. So okay, there are reports available to memory grade. So this is an metaphor, and we can report to you.
Right now, it's pretty heavy with the upperclassmen, but next semester, there's going to be a lot more pressure in the upperclassmen. And I'm really, it's just like a small sample of what is getting offered. I don't kind of feedback from the kids as far as.
But we're going to talk about some of that. Yep. I know what they have. If you've never done an I-1, you only have so long, you're listening to the shape, over, 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 over. I didn't say anything. Cut.
A lot of.
And you keep down the trend where you keep criminology a lot in the background. A lot of them really are taking a lot of different things.
And now, like, the mask and everything, they've got a better idea of what is out there. So I know there's not so much panache for next semester as there is this semester.
The most we love taking is three.
I was just gonna say, if there were.
Yeah, we just decided it was a lot of their days staring at the light if they went over three. And we were kind of pity about who got three as well, just knowing that maybe they'll handle it for now. Yeah, it's good. Yeah, the one with that or whatever. Oh, goodness.
There were all kinds.
We all do.
Bryce is one of our dual enrollment kids and communication to the graduation department, and he couldn't get it and not, and he'd be dual enrollment kid, so we're able to use the program to kind of help him get the special. So we're also in the graduation department, but be able to do a dual enrollment as well.
I mean, you're totally speaking, though. That's a grad reader.
I'll get, I'll get to that.
Now you go right.
Yes.
So thank you for the children. Thank you, children. Steven, that was beautiful.
Oh, yeah. Good view.
Okay, so Jenny, though, you want to.
Yeah, absolutely. So some of the benefits for these kids, there's quite a bit, actually. And I feel that with the position that I'm in, I can kind of relate to them just graduating from my master's degree and still kind of in the full bachelor's with that online platform, so what these guys are doing. So if they were to continue to two-year degree, four-year degree, whatever the case is, they will be using primarily the online platform, whether it's hybrid version or both in person, all that kind of stuff. So it's pretty similar to those on the hybrid campus in D2L. As you guys saw, there are plenty of courses that these students have picked, and there are plenty more. A lot of them have been choosing courses that relate to their future career desires or just topics that they want to pick up on or learn more about. The variety of classes, there are a lot. About one hundred and sixty classes are offered, and that is from the middle school age up to the twelfth grade. So a lot of them are career-based, such as body science, nursing program, nutrition, anatomy, hospitality, cosmetology, just a few to name. And then they go into like the history and the English of courses as well. So one that I'm actually interested in is the history of the Holocaust, so I would love to take that, so I'm trying to push on those things, so I'll learn more about it. But those are, they've got a lot that is offered to them.
We did allow the English classes to be English graduating department. That was a decision with the English charge of cosmetology, the doctor literature, the creative writing that you saw, public speaking. That's one of the one-time days. But all the rest of them are just, are going as a lot of, a lot of course.
So my day is a lot of grading. So it kind of seems like not that big of a deal, but the kids have about three to five assignments due per week. And as you guys saw, there's a lot of students, about sixty, I think it's fifty, yes, fifty. Classes are overseen, so. And the range with those classes goes from nursing all the way to English. So I kind of have to be well-versed in majority of those classes, right? So I've got a lot of grading to go back and forth with what the program offers. I've got the teacher's cheap book, I guess, below. So they typically have to do two discussion posts per lesson. They have critical thinking questions, at least one or two labs, or excuse me, activities that they have to do, and labs. So I, throughout my day, week, I go through and look at all that fun stuff and see what they have learned. What's really cool, actually, is that some of these labs are forensics. They had to create their mock crime scenes. So I saw a bunch of cool pictures, and that was a really fun assignment that I had to grade. As you all know, you want to be in really good communication with your teachers about your student's progress and all that kind of stuff. The students want to be updated with what they're missing or how they're doing, all that kind of stuff. So whether it's email, or they're coming in, or I'm going to them for a class period, I'm in constant communication as with them to see how they're doing, what they need. Some of the assignments, I have an example, cosmetology, you would think that you need another person to kind of do the nails and the skin there and all that kind of stuff. So the students who's in that, we have to kind of go over, well, this assignment you can't really do, so what's a different way for you to do it? Is there a different modality? Can you try a different, like, have a video or something? So there's a lot of communication going on with students and the parents throughout my day. To continue, I kind of want to do this. Any general questions about the particular source, how the assignment should be completed, if it needs a little bit of extra spice, or kind of coming down to like that mock crime scene? I've never met one, so, you know, I don't, I don't think we need to go to the fullest extent. The other really cool tool for me is that I can adjust the assignments for quizzes. So for quizzes, for example, they've got a pool of three hundred questions, right? I can decide what question they can answer during the quiz, or if they don't have any clue, they come to me and I've got the answers, right? Also, the platform has this really cool, cool toolbar. So I've been kind of in communication with these kids, updating them, like, if they've been highlighting this, and kind of going through their class with what we could do that can help ease their learning experience. And then obviously, I want to hold these kids accountable. So this is a self-paced course. It's really, I'm not instructing them, like, they're learning on their own, which is a really, really cool thing, but as adults, you kind of need a little to get going. So I'm there to just get these kids to continue on and push on with their school work.
So I must have known the future when I decided to do this, because, to be honest, it's been an amazing tool for COVID. Several of those kids are virtual kids, or were one time virtual kids. So several of the senior girls taking three courses are virtual kids, and it's allowed us to keep them and have them doing things and stuff like that. We also cut a deal, if you want to think about that way. Normally, you would pay for a course, and you would pay more for courses where you don't hold a license to teach. So like, one of that kid that they play, let's say, in American Sign language, I don't have American Sign language teacher. One of the girls that's taking a polymer art. What we did was we purchased the platform for Bay, Frank, and all the courses, as many courses as kids wanted to take. And that has served us really well, because it also allows kids to really have to say, Jenny, oh, I made a bad decision here, I'm somewhere I should not be, and we were able to change this, change this to them. So one of the things we've been doing is kind of talking with kids and getting their questions and getting them into surveys. There are definitely good and bad courses, as you would expect. So one of the things we talked about is adding to our course catalog, like a student rating, like a five-star out system. Not that they couldn't take anything, but for example, if you want, they don't really like the creative writing course, but they like the mythology course. So try and give them some ideas as they're to be forward in the next year, what courses have been successful and which ones have not, and then gather, gather some information. One of the other things that Jenny mentioned is it's self-paced. So you have this actual grade of, hey, I did ten things and I have ninety percent, but I should have done twenty things, because I don't really have the ninety percent. So we've been trying to balance progress with grade, and we have found a way to do that, to reflect a little bit more correctly where they are and how they're doing. I think that will have future path for us offering is going to be kind of one of those things we have to talk about. I don't know that I can pull that into field next year, so again, it will be what courses do we offer, how do we decide what we're going to do. If you go on their website, it's catalog-based. You have your career catalog, and then you have your more elected catalog. And typically, they want catalog or others. Right now, they're definitely dipping from both, because we have nursing, but we have English class. So we kind of have to decide some of that. Jenny, you're the last.
Yeah, so as Carrie said, I've been surveying kids as to how they feel about E-Dynamic. And most of it is positive, I would say, other than creative writing.
Yes.
One of the biggest things is the workload. So like I said, I have the ability to take an assignment away, but then if I take that assignment away, it's going to pummel up the assignments that are following that one. So then they just feel like, okay, this is this constant cycle of I'm doing these questions, I'm doing these discussions, this lab, when is this going to end? So that's kind of one thing that I'm working through, as well as they are. So I guess that goes with the amount of assignments. And then the pace, they have seemed to like the self-paced idea. Let's say you were in my classroom at the time, they like it, it's kind of more freedom for them to go as a piece, like if there is sports, eh, you know what, I can work on algebra during this class right now, because I know E-Dynamic is going to be just a discussion that helps type thing. So the pacing is great for them. The lessons, for the most part, are interactive. They have TED Talks, they've got, obviously, crime scenes that they have to create, all that kind of stuff. But they don't really feel that there's a whole lot of reading all the time, all that kind of stuff. So they do feel, for the most part, that they are interactive classes, reading, writing, aside. And then the last thing, they really, really enjoy that it's opinion-based. So the discussions there are obviously like, like intermingling like we would here. So they really like, well, I think this, or I don't agree with that. So they, they really enjoy that part of the classroom, so.
And one of the things Jenny and I talked about too was, it would be really nice, in a perfect world, if as many of the nursing students as possible were in the same hour, even though they wasn't like scheduled, it would allow for a little bit more of a classroom feel. So that date is something we're looking at scheduling next year, we may, even if we found seventy-five percent of one hour, so they were together. But I do think it kind of gets that more traditional classroom feel, but you could get a lot of better things if you just gather together.
So what do you do when you have, like, the public speaking? Are you for the person that the person is who's going to speak this for?
No. So with public speaking, I've noticed, again, that he's, he hasn't submitted anything of him, like persuasive speech or kind of thing like that. Right now, he's just doing questions and kind of the history of like Martin Luther King's speech, all that kind of stuff. So he, right now, is not speaking, if you will. He will get to that. It's like, because I was wondering the same thing, and I'm like, when is this kid going to start? Like, this is a speaking class, so it's coming, but he has to kind of.
And then if they do, they'll link them up, make Google Doc and drop all that to Jenny, similar to how, of course, there's a drop, time, and upload everything. I was going to mention the video, because like, the fashion kid, you have to upload pictures of their work, of digital tech, because they're uploading digital pictures and things like that. Yeah, there's multiple formats that they submit their work. That's all we have. Any questions?
I just was wondering, we don't do foreign language.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't have it at all?
We have French.
I know.
Spanish. Because we were unable to find a Spanish teacher, Spanish purchase program does not purchase through E-Dynamic, because they only do collective. The platform actually looks very similar to E-Dynamic. And then, just like Jenny oversees all these guys, Diane Traylor oversees the Spanish kid, but she does not teach the Spanish.
So E-Dynamic doesn't do foreign language?
No, they do not. And actually, the company that I'm using, Spanish Door, contacts with E-Dynamic for all their electric, so it's kind of a circle. And that's because I don't have a licensed teacher, then I have to buy, per se, a licensed teacher through that program. So that's why that one costs more than than E-Dynamic. So like, to give you an example, the American Sign language course, I believe, would be six hundred dollars for the year without a teacher, if I would pay, like, for that course. And with a teacher, I think it's two fifty, I think, for the course. Any other questions?
I just would like to comment, I mentioned it before, I think it's fabulous. Like, when I sat in there, the kids were engaged, they were ahead of schedule, they were able to converse with me on a very articulate level. I was impressed.
And to go at that, I really think that they're taking the adult road, if you will. Like, they, they are holding themselves accountable, like, hey, do you understand that this, these three assignments I don't have? Is there any kind of way that we can work something else, or get to do, want to do this day, want to do the next day, that kind of thing? Like, I really think that this is reassuring them, if you will, so, yeah.
And more than ever, they will be prepared for college virtual classes, because I don't know of college kids right now that can take, yeah, with one virtual class. And that was, well, plus, I would have been probably a huge gap we had prior to this. They did not occur in that at all, they must have been really at all. So they're getting on a little bit of a crash course and not.
I was going to say, it seems like a very smooth transition into college, even in case of face college, because of the different type of learning, different types of programs. I think it's awesome.
Yeah, I was excited when you first presented it, and now you can actually see it in action. Kudos.
Keep in mind, those are only Jenny's first-term out-of-kid, so she'll have a whole lot of batch seconds, not kind of a whole lot of batch classes. All right? Okay, committee reports, what relations between that and October twenty-ninth? Tara?
Okay. Yes, we did. One of the things that we talked about first was a great suggestion from Christiana, actually, about using the Eagle Elementary teachers that put together some great videos for to use. for to use in conjunction and to supplement the traditional parent teacher conferences. And Christiana had just, was so impressed with the quality of the videos that these teachers have put together. She thought it'd be a perfect opportunity to really showcase and share exactly what people can expect to see when they have older kids or think about going their kids in Eagle Elementary. So the discussion was had about expanding that and using that basically as a promo piece for the district. Getting it on the website, things like that. So they were going to go and tweak some of those and change the format a little bit to make it. But I think that was a great, great idea there and moving with the, with the virtual times and making the most of that situation. So it turned out really well. So I'm excited to see some of those. We talked about the upcoming holiday bazaar having an opportunity to make available. A lot of times there's people that have never set foot in the building before come in here. And last year there was a lot of people that came through just out of curiosity to see what a building looks like that's about to be closed. This year I hope that they come back to see what it'll look like when it's going to be staying open. So it's a great opportunity to have some promo promotional literature and things like that, talking a little bit about all the good things going on in the district. So they were going to maybe have some flyers or maybe even rolling video or something highlighting some of the things in the district while people are here. We also talked about helping promote some of the new Anheuser programs. PR Star Program, we discussed our next nominee for that program. We haven't nominated one since we did VP. So we're looking at nominating a community member for this next award. And we've talked about the Honored Educator promo. I think Caitlin was working on kind of revamping and enhancing that a little bit. So she's got some things working on there. And Caitlin and Katie put together kind of our first newsletter of the year. Did, Christiana, do you know, did the Eagle, did that hard copy go out to the families? Okay. So that was this week?
Uh, it had to have been last.
Last.
Last week.
Okay. All right. So and there, and there's a paper newsletter all district-wide that they're going to do monthly. And then we're looking at doing a quarterly direct mailer to households in the district as well. So those guys did a fabulous job on the newsletter from when I saw it. So that's great. And then we just talked briefly about making sure that all of our donors are getting properly acknowledged for all the great donations that are being given. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Do they have extra copies of those monthly newsletters or the dark mail that's in the offices?
Um, we can certainly ask. And actually, I'm sure it's in electronic club too. We should have that.
Yeah, that might be something Caitlin can, just like I think they'd be interested, interesting people coming to the nerve.
Yeah.
It may be worthwhile to put them in the libraries as well?
Yeah, we did kind of talk about that too. I think, and I know our library is backed for cyber money and stuff, so I know their hours can be tricky. But yeah, definitely. Any, any promotional items we have, but we can make a little community, definitely.
Eagle Middle Target.
There you go.
Well, even the village hall and the town hall for when people do go in and pay their property taxes.
Yeah.
Hey, curriculum policy met on November 4th.
Curriculum and policy. We discussed having a student counselor, student rep at each board meeting. This is just kind of a breakaway from our groups that have been presenting, but maybe looking more for an actual student body rep to be at each of the meetings. We discussed proposed course therapy. Tara presented some basic information to begin kind of outlining her idea. And she's been working on searching out funding and partnerships. And it's really just in the very beginning stages as far as how it would apply, as far as curriculum, what type of amount of money we're looking at, insurance. I mean, literally, we have a lot of questions. So Dr. Gray is working to kind of outline those very basic steps for how to begin this endeavor. And so that once a plan or sort of say, at least a budget, a plan is in place, that that could be then brought to the board for further decision-making. We did take a look also at our current policy on terms for board members. As we're all aware, we have four members coming due for election in April of this year, which means that in consecutive years going forward, we'd always run into that kind of same lump of board members being elected. So Todd is, was working with WASD and other appropriate entities to verify if we can adjust that, how we can adjust that. So that going forward over the years, we can kind of get this corrected to the way that it should be. We discussed our current use of the local paper, looked at some different options. Nothing has really decided. And we also again discussed more, more discussion on the cleaning fees due to COVID for rent for spaces. Dr. Gray is still just advising maybe with everybody to make sure that the spaces are clean after everybody's using them and that the appropriate fees are being assessed to those individuals at those times. So that's it.
Thank you. Building and grounds, but today.
Yeah, we met earlier. Two big things we talked about is we have a UTV that failed. There was a discussion and that would show as the tractor leases as well. There's some miscommunication. It's not two separate items. It's the same thing. Our recommendation was to prepare the UTV unless they found a really good deal, they bring it to the finance committee. But they're facing, the timeliness is what they're facing. Bad weather is probably right around the corner. So they use that for, you know, snow and ice mitigation. So they do need to kind of move on it. We discussed the age of the vehicles and possible replacement options. There was one potentially good deal that they should bring to the finance committee as far as a replacement van. But, you know, we discussed that the district needs to define how many vehicles they need. And we need to come up with a way to reduce the fleet that we have. So hopefully by next month, they'll have an idea of what we truly need. And as well as they got some new requirements as far as the food truck and the containers that go in the food truck. So the dimensions changed. So they're going to be able to come next month to building a grounds with some options for a food truck. So that's really, that's really it.
Thank you. Finance committee also met earlier today, what's the?
Finance committee did need today, we covered our standard vouchers, financial reports. We still are looking good. Our audit is on track and our funding is going fine. We did have a slight report from buildings and grounds on the van leases and the fleet, which was just shared. We did discuss 4K transportation and we are, we tabled the well, we're having further input on our individual transportation contracts to those that qualify that attend a private school within the allowed distance of our district borders. We also discussed and we will be recommending a P card program, which is similar to a credit card. However, it does have to be paid off as the expenses are incurred as well as there is additional oversight allowed within that program. So it minimizes our risk. We did have several questions regarding the line of credit that we are recommending that we proceed. We discussed that it would only be utilized in the event that we were not provided our funds through our federal or state or local municipalities that are our accounts receivable that we are due. We also discussed that it would only be utilized after our fund balance had been used. With the understanding that fund balances are not just like a savings account. They are also contain accounts receivable. So the other investments that it would cost us money in the long run to remove from there. We also discussed the fact that it's for $2 million, which is about two months worth of our bills. And the fact that it's very common practice and it saves us the money in that we don't do short-term borrowing and have to bar, have to pay interest on the entire amount. This is only an expense if we do have to use that money. So, and it is just in case we do have to use it because we are not providing the funds in a timely fashion due to changes in tax law and COVID-19 that we would be delayed in receiving our monies. We discussed and are recommending approval of Zizzle for our new vendor for our benefits because it will be a labor savings at no cost to our payroll department. The tractor lease was discussed in buildings and grounds. They decided we're not doing one. We are just doing repairs. In our next finance meeting will be December 8th.
Thank you. Committee's greater reports. Katie from Eagles report was in from Rupkic. She's glad to be here tonight. Sure, Yael Redditch is great fun stuff going on there. A lot of photo ops coming up. They've got a really great Veterans Day program tomorrow. The kids have been writing letters to veterans and I know they're doing a lot with that. So I think we'll get Caitlin over there and make sure we get some nice, nice pictures and press for that. Carrie, you're here. Do you have a verbal report?
Um, I don't think I'm going to be trying to make a conference this Monday night. We did a point of two percent. I think it's going to be obviously not ideal because I turned off the duck more because of it, but.
Tara, remember from many hours.
So I think it was fine. We are fully at present, meeting event again, obviously bow by from last year. I did get a couple of questions about it. I'm happy to call and see what was going on with the characters there following that. Was a trade-off for our Thanksgiving and that's kind of where we're going at this point. So I just, I'm calling out.
I'm working with. And Todd hears us later in the agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have already removed Dean from the consent agenda, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, action items. A, consider approval of the P card program. I've got to touch down a little bit. You want to approve that?
I would move to approve the P card program.
Second that.
Any further questions or discussions on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? He heard. Carries. B, consider approval of the short-term borrowing levels. Make a motion for that. Make a motion to consider approval of the short-term borrowing level. Recommend approval of on-credit similarly due to COVID financial risks. I know that there's other, it's mostly for short-term payments for taxes and stuff.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion or questions?
So I, because this is the potluck record, I mean, I do have some questions. I know we did touch a bit where at least Mitzi and her committee touched on it in finance. But I want to make sure that everything is very clear for those watching tonight. And so I know in the finance committee, Todd, you had explained the benefits of a line of credit versus a short-term loan. Can you just brief over that?
Well, we, I'll use an analogy. Imagine you're a real estate agent. And every month, you know, you're going to have your mortgage, your car payment, utilities, a lot of fixed costs, okay? But in the real estate world, you know, your revenue comes at different times. Now you're in January 15th, okay? You've got a bunch of bills. It's January, you're expecting your, you've used up your savings and you, you know, the I've never been a real estate agent. You know, let's say, you know, you've got a suspension, you're working double housing. And now you're in January 15th, but that guy, you've got a closing. Today, January 15th, you're going to get a check and you're be able to cover your expenses in January. And you get a call and say, you know what, the claim to the move is February 3rd. You need a line of credit. That's, that's kind of what this is like. It's that, you know, we have fixed, we've fixed it in a number of variable costs every month and continue to add up. And our revenues come, some come in September, some come in December, some come in January. And with the COVID situation, the, it's not that we're not going to get those funds, but we don't know if they're going to be as much or if some of those dollars are going to be delayed later in the year. Which if that's the case, you know, you will use up a lot of your, your fund balance covering those months where you can't gotten any revenues. And if your expected revenues are shy of what they should be in September, January, you may need to rely on that, that line of credit for, you know, a week or two or three until your revenues come in. You know, in, in late January, February, March, and so on. So it's basically all this, this is to cover temporary times when, when you have expenses, but the revenues aren't coming in yet soon. Doesn't mean you need less revenues, it just needs to come in later than expected. Or you might have some expenses that get moved up in here for various reasons, which may make sense to do it that way. So that's, that's basically what it is. My guess is we may not have to use it at all. And if we do, it should be minimal, but the $2 million, there's no, there's no cost to the district if we don't use it. The only cost is if we use it and it's only for the amount borrowing and only for the short time we use it. So my expectation is, you know, much cheaper way than doing a short-term borrow, letting out those debt, letting that debt sit in your books for 12 months and then pay it off. Because if you don't need it, you're still going to pay a fee on it. So a lot of districts are doing it this way. We still don't have good fund outs like we do or do it this way. It's usually a lot more economic.
So it's a more forward-thinking safety net that's there for us that's not going to cost us anything.
Yeah, we just, we've just got a bump in our credit rating and I'm expecting a lot of, we don't want situations where we've got a cash deficit, maybe, you know, can't make a full payroll in January because, you know, revenues aren't coming in in the later. So it protects those kind of things because it actually protects the credit liability.
Just to clarify, these are just debts or expenses that we've already budgeted for that we approved in our, in our annual meeting, our budget. So we're not doing anything that would take the place of a referendum or anything like that. This is in place of that short-term borrowing so that we don't have to pay interest on monies that we may or may not use. So it's much more fiscally responsible. And the reason that we went for $2 million is that that's two months expenses basically because we have close to a $12 million budget.
Right. And, you know, I mean, I don't think we'll even adhere that, but there's, there's no additional cost in, in that level. And the bank is okay with it. So, I mean, in the future years, if we refine the actual, it might be less, it might be more, but that's, that's where it's at.
And it's not only COVID-related, it's also related to changes in tax laws where I used to try to get to the town hall and pay my property taxes before December 31st so I could talk down with. But since there's no incentive, last year we didn't pay until later. So.
Right. And that's, and I think you're going to see a lot of that, especially with the economic situation caused by, you know, the COVID-19 issue. I would expect people may opt for that solvent plan paying no cost later if your revenue is still in there.
But there's still monies that we, we have gotten.
Yeah, we're going to still get everything budgeted for. It just said it might come later than what it normally does.
Are we, if we have to dip into our general fund balance before we go into a line of credit? Is there a minimum amount that we have as a target to maintain in that fund balance at all times?
Well, the fund balance doesn't change. It just, that just gives us a cash, a cash buffer. And we will use that up beyond early months of fiscal year because we don't get, our revenue is really high since I can have a year. Is it enough to cover the, the cash flow? Probably, but we don't know that for sure.
And then this line of credit, is that something that once you apply for, it's good until you say you no longer need it?
No, no, it has, it's, it, you know, it has to be temporary, otherwise it becomes a lump of debt. It has to be applied quarter to year.
Every year.
Approved every year, otherwise it's, it's, that's why, it's temporary, you know, it does, it, it, it does dissolve that certain factor.
So that as things change, say next year, it could be something that we would not.
It could be a lot less. I mean, depending on, you know, like I said, I mean, all, all indicators are that, you know, this year's budget fund balance rolls a bit more and we resolve on some of the problems.
Okay, any further questions or discussion?
I just had a couple, just, just so they're on the record. Todd, how long does it take to get an approval for a line of credit? So that I think that there's, you know, thank apologies. Energy efficiency.
Yeah, energy efficiency is great. But basically.
I mean, it has to be approved by the, by the board. We only have one, the board meeting of one. So let's say we didn't do this and now we all of a sudden we're looking at a cash crunch. You know, it, it, it might take too long. Maybe because the bank needs some time with this and they have to go through the process to make sure it's very qualified, all kinds of things. So it's, it's not a quick process that you can wait till the last minute.
Great. And I know we, we've said multiple times, I guess, that you guys are recommending for $2 million. So our short-term previously was about $600,000.
Right.
And now we're thinking at $2 million. So I mean, just, I'll just call it even the 1.5 million addition is, is because what we believe could be a delay in funds for property taxes or state funding, depending, who knows?
Correct.
With everything that's going on with our, our COVID-19 crisis.
Right, we're all in luck for now. And the, you know, we were looking at 1.5 and then the bank said, well, if you, if you did two, there's no additional cost. And if you don't need it, there's, there's no cost to it. So, yeah, maybe you didn't, you know, far more than what we needed in the past. But again, things are different and there's literally no downside to doing it.
It's just more protection in case we need it.
Okay.
Yep, we're good.
We're good? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C, consider approval of the record modification to the individual fund levies for 2025. I believe this came up a little bit. Adjustment that DPI may have sort of.
I would sub move.
Give a second.
I will second that.
Any discussion or questions? Further?
Well, we've been assured that this will not be repeated next year.
Yeah, it's just moving money from one company to another.
Yeah.
You don't think about it at all?
No, we're not.
Them doing, yeah. You know, we're sort of approaching stuff with that. We can go from half day to all day and so. DPIs, it will actually include it. These gets in there again, which gives us more funny and fun cash, but then we produce 39 levels. So no impact, not that bad.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. D, consider approval of Sizzle as our new vendor for benefits.
I would move that we approve Sizzle for our new vendor for benefits.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E, consider approval of the tractor lease.
I would move to table the approval of the tractor.
I'll second.
All those in favor of tabling the tractor lease, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? F, second reading of the new policy is recommended by Naola.
I make a motion to consider approval of second reading of new policy is recommended by Naola. Personal protective equipment during pandemic epidemic events, policy 8450.01.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. G, consider approval of student council fundraiser.
Motion to approve the student council fundraiser.
Second.
I'll second.
And we, I didn't.
I didn't see anything about that.
It's, it's in the portage somewhere. It's, uh, it's.
Who'd like, face?
The half-day.
Half-day.
It's a half-day.
Half-day.
It's in where. Uh, they're, they're going to use it to spend money.
For personal thing, one of the things.
Yeah, it's awesome.
My only question was this, was there a reason this was not getting fundraisers under the consent agenda?
I would think it should have been.
Yeah, probably should have been.
Okay.
Yeah, probably different type of.
I wonder why you would approve it. But just a little student council fundraiser. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fundraisers carries. District administrators report.
Okay, focus on, obviously, COVID. I'm seeing Jefferson, Washoe County, which we represent quite a bit of. They're, they're way up, their numbers, the COVID numbers are way up. The governor was on tonight at the press conference and, and Mitzi, his, his primary message was going to tell everybody to stay at home. I think we were, we were financing at the time, but Carrie saw it, she said, didn't really say much other than.
Probably a time to stay at home.
Yeah, but not schools. But he didn't specifically say who, but I guess that was, that was the message. But in any event, we have numbers, our, our, definitely we put in place here. We said there's three students or staff in a seven-day period that the school will shut down for seven days. Right now, we're two at the elementary, two at the high school. But things heating up around the area, we're seeing more and more schools, campuses work. Couple others, Washoe, well, a lot, number of Washoe County going to virtual, I know Washoe West and now they've got three or four more Washoe that are virtual. Couple of rain. So those are somewhat volatile. And so there's something we need to be prepared for. And, you know, of course, there might be the things where Carrie is called, I'd say, you know, number three is reporting COVID. We'll have to make the decision on that, come in and stay out of the problem, you know, in a parent's time, but we'll have to come pretty quickly. So that's, that's where we're at. And again, it's going to be case by case. I would say Carrie has been, done a fantastic job of taking a leadership role in this. We, we offer our share of tech messages as well, but it's great. She's on top of things and I think she's really helping both Katie and Kaylee, Carrie.
Too many.
And so we're talking through this, but I feel pretty good that everyone's on board. And these two young ladies have been great about keeping things, keeping me apprised of things. And so we just, we just have to be day by day. It would be wonderful if we could get to Thanksgiving and that would give us literally five days off, Wednesday, D-Day off. If you do any cleaning or just to kind of go to a reset or whatever. But we'll just, we'll just have to be ready. Worst-case scenario, we get to go for a meal that Monday or Tuesday before Thanksgiving. That would be the worst-case scenario. But that's only going to happen, I think, if we get those, those numbers and talk about it. I don't know if there's any questions on behalf, but.
I, I'd just like to kind of mirror and what you said about that Carrie, you did a great job. There's an article in the Daily newspaper today and they had talked about kind of the COVID situation with eight districts in the Jefferson County area. And out of all of the districts that they referred to in the article in detail, like their combination of virtual and how they've been doing. Well, my regard was the only one listed that has had continual face-to-face with no building shutdown and no district-wide shutdown.
So you just jinxed, just Tara.
It was already.
No, it was blown inside. I know, I read it.
I get asked all the time, hey, is your school still open? I'm like, yes, it is. And I work, I work, I work for Walker's Point. I'm surrounded by Oak Creek, Franklin, Greenfield, Tosa, MPS. Like, no, we're going strong, we're all face-to-face. I mean, we're taking the greatest precautions. Must be in our water or it wasn't pretty good out here. So, so I would, great job.
It is good and I think it's, that, that's a good bit of PR. So that's kind of what things are at and, you know, I'll, I'll continue to keep you posted as I, as I hear things. I'll try and, try and try and prevent this.
Did Al, your virtual, do you have a business management report?
I can, can I be heard though?
Can you email it?
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Yeah, not well enough, probably.
Can you email it to us?
Yeah.
Yes, and for the record, if I may say, just that we are in a solid financial position. We are probably going to realize we are having savings that are beyond, we're having a very positive year and hopefully next year will be an even better year.
Good, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Short, but sweet.
Yeah, right.
Right.
You heard what I did when I was here. I think because you set it up.
Yeah.
I'm giving you.
The scoring that you've already got.
Alrighty.
Can, can I just, oh, my board comments? Can I make a couple comments?
Absolutely.
Okay. First off, as Carrie mentioned, I was here last night for, well, a little over three hours for parent-teacher conferences. And I made a point of hitting all of the teachers for both of my kids in sixth grade and ninth grade for two reasons. One, I'm a parent, they're my kid, and I want to make sure that they're not screwing up my class and they're doing what they're supposed to do. But two, I wanted to personally meet and talk and thank each one of these teachers and kind of get some feedback. And I got to tell you, I got some phenomenal feedback from these teachers. And just the really positive vibes, the good things that they had to say. Some, several brand-new first-year teachers teaching, first-year maybe veteran teachers, but first-year to our district. And they have just been so happy and so pleased to be here and be a part of the district. They went on about how phenomenal our students are here, just the great small community family feeling here from working with Carrie and other staff to the families and the kids. It just really made me feel good as a parent living here, knowing, wow, I've got these teachers that are here and two of them said, we want to be here for the long haul. If Carrie will let us stay, we want to stay here for the long haul. And they were brand-new this year. And what a crazy year to come to any district. But it just really made me feel great, also as a school award member, that we have teachers like that representing our district and guiding our students. And I think we've done a fabulous job in a difficult time of securing some, some quality teachers that are really committed and surely love this district already. And I think they'll be a positive asset down the road. So kudos to, to Carrie and everything that you've done to get them here. And then one other.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. That was awesome. And then I was, I missed the earlier committee meetings. I was at the end of season cheer banquet for the cheerleader team. And I have to give kudos to Coach Jesse and all of the girls on the team. This was the first year I, I kind of was a pushy mom and I said, you know, sixth grade's coming up here. Is there any chance the sixth graders could, you know, try out and maybe be a part of, a little part of the team, you know, thinking they might just get some experience and some mentoring from the older girls. And it turned out to be, I think, a better opportunity and more wonderful than anyone had anticipated. And the camaraderie and the bond between the sixth-grade girls and the high school girls, the hugs and the tears and the fun that they had together. And they all got so much out of that experience. And the coach even said that the level of talent, they got to do stuff, some tricks that she hasn't been able to do with the team before. So it was really, he handed out a bunch of awards and, and all the girls got recognized by each other for all their hard work and efforts. And I just credit our small size to be able to build those relationships. And I don't think something like that would have worked in a district much bigger than us. So the girls were really proud of it. The coach was really, really proud of the opportunity to be able to do that. And I just want to give them a shout out because that was another great thing, bringing the sixth grade up here, opening up the doors to more opportunities, not only did it benefit the sixth-grade girls, but the high school girls, they got something that they never would have got otherwise too. So, but also that's, that's awesome. Okay.
You have to get it from a ground level and as a past cheer mom, I love your, that's how. Alrighty. Could the upcoming meetings are listed on your agendas, the usual ones? And need a motion to adjourn to closed session for the reasons stated. I'll make a motion to adjourn to a closed session.
I'll second.
Usually there's a roll call vote going to closed session, so I'll, I'll do that again. Tara, anybody? Here? Mike, buddy?
Here.
Zabrecuski?
Yes.
Do you hear it? Here? Mitzi Kraszewski?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you, you got it right. I've never seen you here much higher than I would have thought, yes. Alright, we'll now go into closed session. Thank you guys for coming. 50 seconds.